Friends and neighbors, welcome to another in-person and VFR ISS Jones Doctor Review Meeting of the State and City Council. It is Monday, the 7th of March. At the State and Community Center, someone local is approaching their 80th birthday, but I'm not going to bother anyone else with that. Let's see, let's start with the flag suit, please. Back in the day, we used to do this every morning at school. Seems like after 50 or 60 years, you'd remember all of it, wouldn't you? Oh, gosh. Okay, under announcements, are there any additions to the agenda? And let's see, we've got two business. I'd like to, if the group is willing to pull that letter of support and North Saniam School District Letter. It seems like a moot point. We're near the end of a two-year, well, maybe a year, the end of a two-year pandemic. And mandates are going away, restrictions. And other than a school board finally decided it needed to say something to the community, I don't see the point of this, so. I think I'm gonna pull, I'm gonna pull that off the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yo!
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is Counselor Oort.
Yes, it is.
Um, I appreciate your opinion on this. I would like to keep it on the agenda. I don't know what the protocol is for that, but even though the restrictions are being lifted, that doesn't mean that they can't come back. I think it's important to express our concerns in this matter and to really push for local control when it's necessary, and I think at this time it is.
Okay, appreciate that. Let's not just pull it, let's put it on the next agenda when everyone's here. And then those patiently for it can speak about it. So that's off for tonight. We can put it on-
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
When are we, when are we gonna plan to put it back on then?
I'm sorry, that, it's either the volume or something, Counselor. What was that last comment, please?
When, if we're gonna pull it today.
Mr. Mayor, she's asking for another date.
Yes.
When's the next meeting?
March 21st, Mayor.
Those were on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
That seems like a pretty long time to wait to address the school board letter of support. I don't mind having it on there and voting on it this evening.
What kind of vote do we get? I don't know. I'm just gonna pull it until March 28th meeting. So, that'll take care of that. Are there any appointments tonight? I'd like to talk after meeting, one of your favorite people desperately wants to be on something. You especially would like to visit about that, okay? Any public comment, Alyssa?
No, Mayor, we didn't receive any requests.
Consent agenda from February 22nd, regular council minutes. Could we get some action on those, please?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I'm not sure that we can take action on that.
Oh, without? We've got three.
Right, but I don't think Counselor Hook was in attendance. But I could be wrong.
Mr. Mayor?
Yo!
Counselor Quigley, I believe we, we had this issue before where we haven't had all the counselors on a meeting. And we talked about if, if the counselor who wasn't at the meeting agrees that, how was it said? Alyssa, you might need to help me, but if they just, if they are agreeing with the other counselors that, okay, you're saying this is what, what happened, then I'll agree with you that that's what happened. Does that make sense?
Sure, that's me.
Alyssa, do you know?
That, that sounds like a fair recap. It's been a while, but I
Okay.
do believe that that was essentially what that was said.
Can we get some action on those minutes in, please?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to move that we approve the, the minutes of the last, is it just one meeting? From February 22nd?
There a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second. Would you pull the council, please?
Sure, sure. Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Oort?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Okay, thank you, folks. General business tonight is an informational report from ASR feasibility study. Mr. Ludwig, good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Yes, tonight we've got two presentations. We're gonna start off with the ASR feasibility study. I prepared a real brief background I'd like to read before I turn it over to our consultants. It just gives you a little bit of background, where we, where we've been and where we, what we've done and where we're headed. But the city receives its drinking water from the North Saniam River, as you all know. We have one shallow well located down at Riverfront Park. All the water comes from the North Saniam River. It's very pristine. And I'm not sure if you're aware, but we won state, the best tasting drinking water in the state again, just a couple of days ago. We haven't, we haven't put anything out, but we did win it again. So, that's good news. In 2019, at our City Council Management Retreat, one of the goals was to find another water source for the city. That was put, placed in the one to two-year category of goals that we should be searching for. In 2019, the Public Works Department entered into a contract with the consultant team of Keller Associates and GSI Water Solutions to identify, conceptually evaluate a potential viable alternatives for a secondary water supply source. They prepared a technical memorandum in 2019 to explore a aquifer storage and recovery system for the city. Couple of the criteria that we looked at in doing that, I, I wanted to have this water source completely separate from the North Saniam River. So if something was to happen to the North Saniam River east of us and polluted the stream, we would still have availability treating or getting water and serving our citizens with it. So that was one of the criteria. The other one was, it needed to be within three miles of the city. And that is what we looked at. We came up with a aquifer storage and recovery system. In late 2019, the OWRD advertised a project feasibility study grant for cities. We applied for that grant and we were awarded $154,000 for the second phase of feasibility. In August 2020, the OWRD, they told us that we got the grant for 154,000. We put a contract out and Keller and GSI were awarded this contract to do the work. For the last year, we've been working with Keller and GSI Solutions, performing the ASR feasibility study out at Mill Creek Park. And with that, tonight, I've asked, we've prepared our final report. We're getting ready to submit it to the OWRD. Tonight, I've asked Keller Associates and GSI Water Solutions to give us a presentation of what they've done and where we've been and what to look forward to in the future. And give us the, a summary of the results of the feasibility study that we've been working on. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Peter. Peter was gonna share his screen and we have Peter and Walter Burt and Robin Cook from GSI tonight. And there's Peter.
Right. Good evening. Can I share my screen properly? Was the test? All right, I wanna thank Lance. I think he had a pretty good summary. We're at this point to share with you kind of the, the quick summary of the ASR feasibility. Probably have a picture here of the test well happening with a stealing basin there, and then also an overall site of locating where the ASR facility location could be located. So for aquifer, aquifer storage recovery, what and why? So, the main reason an aquifer, ASR system works for a lot of systems is there's an abundance of supply in the winter. We have a high rainfall here in Western Oregon and a lack of rainfall during the summer, but that happens to be when the peak demands are. That peak water use period that you see in the middle, i- is met with also a capacity that we have at our water treatment plant. And so the ASR facility is a way to produce a manner system with when water's available and when the demand need that water. Robin, go ahead.
All right, I'll jump in here just a little bit, building on what Peter said. The schematic to show how that works. So we've got excess water in the winter time that come from the treatment plant. It gets injected, gets injected into a well, into the storage aquifer, where it stays until you need it to meet that increased demand. And then it's recovered and goes back into your distribution system. And that use can be for municipal water supply, irrigation, it can even be non-fallible water. We see ASR being used for a variety of different uses. Go ahead to the next one. So, there are a few key factors to evaluate and consider when assessing ASR feasibility. The first one is having adequate and reliable water supply for that winter storage period. The next would be a suitable aquifer system that is able to store the water that you have injected and also be able to recover it again. The third would be a properly designed well that has all of the importance to be able to inject and recover that water. Infrastructure, either existing or new, to be able to distribute the water. And also geochemical compatibility, looking at how the water interacts, the surface water, source water, and then the native groundwater, to make sure that you don't end up with any adverse reactions there. So our study was primarily focused on the two first factors shown there. And once we got past the, the first question, the city does have excess available water in the winter time. So looking at the aquifer system became the biggest unknown. Go ahead, Peter. So in Staton, the target storage aquifer is the Columbia River basalt group, which is found across Idaho, Oregon, Washington here, shown in yellow. It's layers of flows of the salt. And the blue dots on this map are showing various ASR systems. And you can see that over 80% of the ASR systems in the Pacific Northwest are found in the CRBG. The red dots, the red areas on this map correspond to groundwater limited areas that have been identified in areas where groundwater levels are declining because of overuse. And coincidentally, some of the characteristics of the CRBG that make it prone to depletion also make it a good storage offer. Go on to the next slide here and just do a quick overview of the CRBG aquifer. So the picture on the right there shows a few different flows of the Columbia River basalt. And the lines there show the inner flows. And we've got all this green flesh growth at the inner flows because that's where the water is. The schematic over on the left shows, we've got these dense interiors and then broken up and rubbly zones in between them. And that area in between the flows is where the water is going to be. If you can imagine what it looks like when you drive over McKenzie Pass or you're walking in a lava field in central Oregon, that really rubbly broken up zone is what comprises those inner flow zones. So you get that broken up material, another flow comes over on top of it. And you get the dense section in between the flows. So we don't have much vertical flow in between each of these layers, unless there's significant faulting. But for the most part, the water, it's really restricted to the inner flow zones. I should've said at the beginning, if you guys have questions, feel free to pop up with it. We can go on to the next slide.
I was wondering, can you, is there a way to adjust your microphone just a little bit? It's a little like underwater sounding compared to the other speakers. Thank you.
Is that any better?
Yeah, it seems like a little bit better.
Okay, I'll just hold my phone side on that. So to evaluate the aquifer characteristics in Staton, we drilled a small diameter test well. And then we did some testing there. So here's a little schematic of the test well. And the picture on the right shows that broken secular zone, so the less exposed of the little bubbles that you can see in the rock there, and that, so that's a water bearing zone there. We encountered the salt at a depth of 230 feet. And we set casing to a depth of 324 feet, even though we went through a couple of the water bearing zones, which are shown in blue on the picture here, because we wanted to be sure that we were deeper than other potential nearby wells to decrease the risk of interference and mostly for interference, but we can get into that again later. We did a step rate test where we pumped the well at successively higher rates. And then we were able to pump this well at 500 gallons a minute for 24 hours. And that pumping rate was really restricted by the size of pump that we could get into this eight inch well. It was a very good, very good well, produced a lot of water, so that was very encouraging. We also grabbed a sample from the well for water quality and collected a sample from the distribution system in a home in the neighborhood so that we could conduct a geochemical analysis comparing the source water with the native groundwater. Go on to the next one. So we were looking at whether or not this particular site would be able to be a feasible source of emergency supply use. And that was looking at injecting at 700 gallons a minute and then being able to pump out the water, the stored water, at just over 1,000 gallons a minute. And we were looking at, you know, short-term use sometime when the Saniam is not available for use. But we also projected out and looked at possibly being able to use this for a longer term, like the summertime demands. And in both cases, if this looks to be a feasible solution. Did want to know that when the water is in storage, because we're talking about an emergency use, that water is available in subsequent years. So you can bank that water and carry over your storage from year to year. So if you don't use it one summer, it's still available for use the second summer and afterwards. Next slide. So the next steps, if the city were to move forward with building a full-scale ASR facility, the first would be permitting, and I'll go through these different steps as we go here. Then designing and constructing a full-scale well. The well that we did under this feasibility study is not large enough for the rates that the city is looking for, but it could be used as a backup well in the future and at a, at a lower pumping rate. So it would need to have a larger well built and constructed. And then design and constructing infrastructure and other improvements to connect the well to the city's distribution system. Then we would go into shakedown testing and finally be running an operational ASR program. And next slide. So the ASR permitting overview here. The ASR limited license would be the first step, and that allows the city to store water that has been diverted from a different water right. So you don't have a water right for ASR. ASR is just a storage water right, so you use the city's existing surface water rights as the source water. And then the ASR permit is for the storage. And it requires a limited license. You go through a pre-application meeting with OWRD and Department of Environmental Quality and the Oregon Health Authorities to sort of talk through the project and, and any concerns they may have. And you have to submit a fairly robust application that includes the hydrogeological characterization, groundwater, setting up a pilot testing plan. And a lot of the work that was done for this feasibility study would go right into that application. Now these limited licenses are good for five years and you can keep renewing them as long as you need to. And once this system is fully built out, you can apply for a permanent ASR permit. Next slide. So the, a lot of the design for this final ASR well would be based on the existing test well. We also need to make sure that the geology lines up cannot always be the case. So a lot of the design work would probably be pretty, pretty well along the lines there. And then Peter can go into some of the other parts.
Yeah, if you look at the picture on the bottom left there, that's the actual above-ground facility. Looking at the, the piping, the mechanical, the valves, and then of course, the building to, to house the facility and the, what chlorine injection that you may need. That just gives you a relativity of the size compared with the, the vehicles there. And then, along with the facility itself, yes?
Can you just turn your volume down a little bit? You're really blowing us out here.
I'm blowing, I'm blowing you out and Robin's not, huh? I'm not sure how to turn my volume down, actually.
That's good, right there.
I think we got it.
All right.
A little further away?
That works right there.
Thanks for saying something and not having me just annoy everyone. So along with the building and the mechanical facility itself at the ASR well, what we also looked at, we, we ran the model and ran the flows that would be required for injection and both and inject, both injection and recovery, to see would that stress the system? Would that create other issues, other problems with distribution? And what, what we found is, is similar to what was already in as a capital improvement project for the water system, is that this pipeline indicated in green here in the, in the graphic here is a, a pipeline just connecting some looping. Because once those, the injection and the recovery flows, you can consider them basically a small fire flow demand. And those are, you know, pretty high demands in a system. But this pipeline right here would resolve that additional stress on the system and allow for fire flows to continue to the residents and properties as they are right now. So that's a new 16-inch water line would be recommended as, as well as the ASR facility itself.
Let me real, real quick, that is in our current master plan, so that's nothing new. We already knew about that in 2004, so they're just showing that would have to be constructed.
Yep, thanks.
Right, so once the, the well is constructed and everything is cooked up, we'd go through a series of pilot tests and shakedown testing, starting, you know, with injecting for an hour, letting it sit for a little bit and then pulling it back out and getting into progressively longer and longer storage and injection and recovery periods to really nail down the full-scale operations of the well and also monitor the well performance during those, during those tests. And this would give us more of a long-term operational rate and volume that the city would be able to expect from the facility. During these tests, you'd be monitoring water levels, the response in the aquifer, and also looking at the water quality of the recovered water to see how it is mixing. Next. During the ASR operations, there are reporting requirements. If they're annual, you keep track of your rates and your volumes and your water quality. You'd also be tracking the performance of the well throughout the, the cycle. And like any other asset the city has that would need to be maintained, so looking at the health of the well over, over these cycles. Next. Getting a little bit more into operations and maintenance. It's really important to have operational staff familiar with the process and brought in at the beginning of, of one of these facilities so that they understand the hydraulics, they know how the valves all work, they know what to monitor for. It's important to backflush the system periodically so that you don't get a buildup of any material in the wells or in the screens or in the aquifer itself. The operations plan needs to have your anticipated recharge and recovery rates, your volumes. And it also requires some adaptive management, especially in the case of Staton where this is, you know, an emergency use. You need to be able to, to quickly move into a recovery phase when it's necessary. So just understanding what goes into that. You can't just flip a switch. You need to make sure that, that things are backpushed and ready to go. Same thing with, with when you're injecting the well, making sure that all the property, all proper water quality tests are being run to make sure that, that the system can operate as, as fluidly as possible. Part of this tracking is also looking at the well performance and looking at how water levels and pumping rates change over time to make sure that the well is as healthy as possible. So we call that a, the measurement is specific capacity, so looking at how much drawdown you see in the well versus how much water it's able to pump. And that can be used as an indication for well needs, any sort of, any sort of work, maintenance, rehabilitation, et cetera. So going on to the next one.
So now's the, the summary of what the, the projected or, you know, cost estimate would look like for the ASR facility. And this includes the pipeline, the above-ground, the, the well drilling, design, like, you know, limited license, you know, the testing, so on and so forth. So this is a, an estimate of that full amount for the ASR facility. And the better news.
They're funding.
Funding opportunities. So, go ahead, go ahead, Robin.
They already, in addition to their feasibility grants, also have a water project grant. And it's typically available each year. This year, there is $9.3 million available for the '22 cycle. And this grant is 75% funding with a 25% cost match. And I included a list here of eligible projects and below ground storage is the one of the projects that's listed there.
And that's, that's the, the slides that we wanted to share. We do have also a, a short video showing just kind of what that looks like when, during the, the well testing that was completed. Hopefully it'll work and not you too, oh, there we go. I don't know how to rotate that. Great.
It's a lot of water, Peter. So, speaking of that, I guess I'm not gonna speak for the City Council, but I'm just gonna prompt a couple of questions from you for answers, so clear it up. And Walt might have to jump in here as well as Robin, but we went through this feasibility project. We had a criteria to start with. We wanted to pump, we wanted to make sure that we could get over a million gallons a day from this well for emergency situations. With your guys' experience, the council's gonna wanna know whether or not we could hit that with what we've, we've done. And I know it's, you know, until you go out and, you go out and build the, the real thing, you don't really know. But in your professional opinions- real thing, you don't really know. But um in your professional opinions, what's it look like? Does it look like it's potentially fruitful for the city to invest five million dollars for a secondary water source?
Uh I'll uh, th- this is Walt Burt. I uh work with Robin. And Chris Wick, by the way, um was instrumental in pulling this thing together too, along with, uh you know, obviously Peter and Keller Associates. Um, you know, o- o- one of the reasons why we took the approach to the feasibility study that we did, you know, including drilling a test well, was to a- address these types of uncertainties that that you're essentially referring to, Lance. Um, some feasibility studies, you know, you 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 take it up to a certain point, and uh they they're less expensive, but but you don't get a a good sense of of, you know, y- you don't address all these uncertainties. Uh we're, we feel pretty uh pretty confident that you can achieve uh at least close to, if not uh in in excess of those target rates. Um and and I'm 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 given a little bit of uh gray there just because, uh you know, as Lance said, you don't know until you put the big well in. But we have essentially tested, you know, up to half the, essentially half the capacity that we were asking for in the aquifer and um uh for a shorter time, obviously, than you'd be recovering, but um for a long enough period that we feel pretty good about the understanding of the aquifer. It's a, it's a highly productive aquifer. It's bounded, which basically means, you know, there are some faults and and the basals, you know, sort of pinch out against the mountains there. But uh we also know that um, you know, it's 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 pretty extensive off to the west. Uh it doesn't seem to be excessively bounded. Uh the pro- productivity of the offer was quite high, that, you know, and and the well in particular. And also, we have, we have a pretty good feel for, you know, what the aquifer looks like nearby. Um and this this particular area has sort of been highlighted in other sort of more regional studies as as potentially favorable for ASR. So it's a long-winded way of saying we're pretty confident.
Um, one, one more question, and then I'll, I'll just quiet down, but I want to make sure this information gets put out there. So it was really clear, the way we were talking there, that we'll be pumping water into the aquifer during the winter months, and then in the summer months, when we need it, we can draw it out. But we can draw it out at any point during the year, correct? Once we have some banked.
Yeah, that that is correct.
Okay.
You 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 can, I, yeah, there there there, you're you're not restricted to a season. You you will, you know, uh some of it is the devil in the details in terms of the permitting, but yes, you are allowed to um to recover any time of the year. And in fact, there are other communities that do use ASR as an emergency source, you know, not just in the summer.
For example, I mean, one of the reasons we're looking at this, obviously, we have great water source now, is that if we have a fuel spill, we need to shut down our intake to the Sandy Ann River in the wintertime. We can probably kick this thing on and use it, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Uh it uh as lo- as long as you've got water stored, that's that's the key piece.
Yep. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I want to get that out so you guys understood that. Um so I'll turn it over to you guys for questions. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I have got a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. First off, thank you for asking those questions, Lance, because that was very helpful. Um, I was curious about a, two things, the grant um opportunity. I didn't quite hear all the details. It was a little um muffled. Um so I'm just curious, was that seventy-five percent funding that can be available, and is that likely that we could get something like that?
Yes, it is a seventy-five percent um funding. The uh the likeliness of of getting the grant depends year to year on who else is applying for the grants. This is, this is a very good project in in our, in our opinion, because it it meets the criteria that they're looking for. Um but it also sort of depends on who else is going after this kind of a grant.
Is
Yeah, a- a- and this is Walt, just just to follow up on that. I I we 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 feel like, feel that this would be a um, you know, a good candidate and would score pr- uh highly, given uh the circumstances.
Do you guys uh have any experience with um, like, do smaller communities sometimes get beat out over larger communities for this kind of money, or does it, does it seem like sometimes smaller communities have a better opportunity of getting the funding? What's your feel on on that in the past?
I I I haven't seen any uh, you know, sort of size bias. Um it's, it's really, the the department has put together um, I don't think it's seven or nine different criteria. And uh, you know, I've seen some big communities uh get shut out, and I've seen some small communities get grants and and and, you know, vice versa. But if you actually dig into the applications, you know, there's, there's a, you know, it's sort of a pretty sound reason why.
And then I had a a question about the, the location and um the surrounding properties. Um maybe Lance can answer this. Are the surrounding properties that are right outside the city limits, well, are they on our water, or will be, will we have any impact to their well water if, like, there's some farms that are out that direction?
I'll speak to a portion of it. Uh there are farms that are just north of it, uh but Mill Creek is on the north line of that property, so maybe a portion of Mill Creek is outside of our city. But uh
Lance, are you talking?
Yeah, I'm having a hard time hearing.
I can't, I can't hear you, Lance.
It's the darn button. Yeah, I I apologize. Um, the, I'll just paraphrase. Um, we, you know, really, the point is, is that we drilled this well much deeper than anything around here. And I believe that was one of the criteria you looked for, Walt and Robin, was that when we pumped down and got five hundred gallons a minute, we were showing that we're not having any effect on the surrounding wells. And that was one, that's one of the criteria um that we looked at, and I know that would be one of the criteria that the uh OWRD would look at. But Walt and Robin, can you speak that a little bit?
Yeah, um, yeah, I'll 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 jump in, and Robin, you can, you can backstop me here. But um, i- i- one of the reasons why we looked at the site, you know, was just from a hydrogeologic feasibility standpoint and the potential, you know, looking for the higher potential areas where uh we would run into a more favorable aquifer, you know, an aquifer that had the suitable characteristics. You know, one of the criterias is thickness of the Columbia River Basalt section. Thickness equates to the potential for more flows. Um, also, you know, we're looking for these troughs in the basals, because they tend to be, you know, old drainage channels, which um when lava flows over them, uh it it um often general generates more of this rubbly texture that Robin was talking about. And so uh the the nice thing about that particular site, it was right out in the middle of this, you know, essentially deep trough in the basalt that had been identified from some mapping about, oh, twenty, twenty-five years ago. So that that was a a big reason from the hydrogeologic standpoint. Uh we wanted deeper also, as Lance said, to avoid interfering with shallow wells. Um, and uh, uh, you know, that's really the majority of it, but that sort of links up with some of these other criteria. Does this is, does the city own the land? That, that's a good thing. You don't have to buy land. Is it nearby your, your uh distribution system, so you don't have to lay a lot of pipe? Um, you know, and in 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 other, there there are a few other criteria, too. So that that's, that's really our, uh, you know, the the big reasons. And and I'll throw one other piece in there. And two, operationally, it's good to have room at these sites. Uh you need a uh, you know, essentially a little detention pond to uh backflush your well. It's a little bit like a swimming pool. You need to backflush the filter, as it were. Um, so just having, you know, sort of the, those combination of factors all put together kind of drove us to this particular location.
I just wanted to add a little bit about the the interference, too. We, we are aware of several irrigation wells in the sort of greater area there. Um, we didn't see any any impact of those wells pumping during our testing period. We do want to instrument the test well possibly to be able to watch the water levels over the winter and spring and summer, just to see if we can pick up on any sort of fluctuations in the water levels um that would be due to other wells pumping in the area.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes. Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Um, thank you. So I don't know who this is a question for, if it's Lance or maybe um Susanna. So the twenty-five percent that we would have to come up with, where does that come from?
Well, I believe our SDCs would probably pay for the majority of it. Um, it's for a future secondary water source, and I believe that is in our master plan. Um, but this is a water source for us. And what we don't come up with, um, we would have to go through our water fund, which is pretty weak right now. But those are things we'd have to obviously look at if we were to go forward and apply. But I I think most of it would come from the SDCs. Um, and then we may have to finance it, whatever the twenty-five percent it comes up to be.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Um, so I have a question about the injection aspect of it. Kind of has me intrigued. Um, I wanted to make sure I understand this correctly. So we did the test well that you have now, and you showed us what the results were. Um, five hundred gallons per minute, right? Something like that. At what point um is the injection required? Or is there a point where the injection's gonna be required? Sounds like that five hundred gallons per minute's pretty, pretty sufficient.
So the the five hundred gallons a minute was what the test pump could handle, given the eight-inch casing. Um, the injection was, um, we looked at injecting at seven hundred gallons a minute um by using the aquifer properties that we were able to um estimate based on our testing. Um, and the reason we were injecting at seven hundred gallons a minute versus recovering the water at a hun- at a thousand gallons a minute is that you always want to pull the water out of the well a little bit harder than you're pushing the water in, just in case, you know, there's a little bit of turbidity or anything else in that water. You don't want that material to wind up clogging the aquifer material. So you want to really flush it out when you're pumping the well. And that's why the recovery rate is higher than the injection rate.
Okay.
But that rate was developed based on the anticipated demand that the city had um of a million gallons a day.
So, Robin, I don't have it in front of me, but what does five hundred GPM um equate to as far as per day? Peter? I think we are looking at over a thousand GPM um to meet the one, one million gallons a day.
Okay.
And so it'd be about a half a million gallons a day, and I believe, Peter, you're crunching, I can see you
Yeah, five hundred gallons a minute is seven hundred and twenty thousand gallons in a day, if it's constant twenty-four hours.
So it was a little less than what we were pushing for in our criteria.
Sure.
Um, and that's, that's why we'd be looking at digging a, a, uh, drilling a different well if we wanted to go forward.
Okay, so just so I understand this, the injection water, that's gonna be rainwater, runoff? How, where's that source?
That'll come from our treatment plant.
Correct. It has to be potable water.
Okay, so this project potentially could not benefit the neighborhood to the west where we have our current challenge.
I guess I'm not understanding that.
The retention pond to the west that we've had years and years of issues with?
Oh, yeah, that's a stormwater unrelated.
This is just drinking water.
I understand. I'm just trying to make sure I cover all the bases here. That's potentially not relieve that situation.
Oh, no, this this won't have anything to do
Okay. Um, the last question I have is what total acreage is required to detract from the park?
I think we came up with about a quarter to a half an acre. It'd be that front, the front portion, the front yard lawn of that house.
Right.
That's where we'd be building this.
Okay, and that's not, that's limited to that size.
And we would incorporate that into the park.
Okay. All right, thanks.
If we were to go forward, right? Is that right, Peter? Didn't we say quarter acre to a half acre, something like that?
That that seems feasible. I mean, with the building size we're looking at, yes.
Yeah. I took a tour of the City of Tualatin's ASR. Um, I I think it would be a little small, it's a little smaller than ours as far as uh what they pull out of it. Walt, you could help me or Robin. Um, but it seems to me that they had a quarter of an acre, maybe a third of an acre used for the facility, their generator, their drug, their driveway and and so forth. Um, and then, of course, they have the area, they're, they blow the water off out front. I didn't account for that, but it seems to be about a third of an acre, maybe?
Yeah, that that's about right, Lance.
Hey, Lance, I have a question for you.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was curious if you can refresh my memory on if that house stays when we do the full park, the Mill, Mill Creek Park. Does it stay there?
Um, that's an issue for another meeting, I believe. I, it would really be up to the council. We designed the park for it not to be there.
Okay, that's what, that was my question. Thank you. That was my, my question.
Things change.
Right. So if things change, uh and I don't want to get too deep into the weeds, but the, when you guys say that you have to, like, I can't remember the term that you used, I'm guessing that you have to let some water out. Does it flood the front lawn of that house?
No, I think what we probably have to do is using the detention facility, which really makes, why this makes a a great location, because we have five acres of a pond sitting right there already.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
We just blow the water into the pond, which we already built. Yeah.
Quick question. Is there an artesian quality to a well that deep? That's just my curiosity. Or when you unhook the drill, does water come up by itself?
So
That, that, okay, Robin. Yeah, go for it.
This particular well did have a static water level that was higher than where the water is coming from. So water is coming from, you know, deeper than three hundred and fifty feet. It's more like four hundred feet or so below ground surface that the water is coming from. But the static water level is much higher than that, I believe. It's eighty feet. Um, below ground surface is where the water level was here. So it is, is under pressure, but it is not a flowing artesian well in this case.
Okay, I guess, yeah.
Most wells do that. Once you drill, well, I won't speak, they're the experts, but my experience is, once you drill it, the uh, the static water level comes up in the well. So if you don't reach the water till like three hundred feet, the pressures blow the water up in the well to maybe, I don't know, whatever, to, or in in this instance, eighty feet.
Oh, really?
So you'll go down eighty feet and you're, you're hitting water. Geez. And that, is that correct?
Yeah, and I, yeah, that's, that's, that's right, Lance, particularly in the basals, because it's so highly confined. Um, and and there are flowing artesian wells in the basals in places also, um, not as much as there there used to be. One, one thing I'll jump in here is it, it's, it's, it's good, you know, the water level is actually in a fairly good place. You want a little bit of room, we call it headroom, uh with which to inject water. And you want, um, you, but you, you don't want the water level too low because, you know, when you pump the water level, it drops down, and you don't want it to get all the way down to the level of the aquifer. So we're, we're in pretty good shape here. Um, there's a potential, um, you know, if you were to put in a full-size well, that we might actually design the well to inject under pressure, which is to say the water level will be above ground surface. Um, and and that's done in some places. City of Cornelius does that, for example.
Thank you. Thank you. What else? Any more?
Uh. Unless you have any questions, would I, I would just like to finish this presentation by, they brought up the um, the potential for the grant opportunity. Um, I understand there's no council met, the, the full council isn't here tonight. So I think at the next council meeting, or the one after that, probably the next council meeting, I will bring a resolution forward, and you guys can decide on it and give you something to think about for the next couple of weeks, whether or not you think we should go forward or not. Um, because April twenty-ninth is the deadline for the applications, and so we, we're, it's kind of, it doesn't, it's pretty short order. So um, if you feel like we need to wait another year, that's fine, too, but I just want to bring that to your attention.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? Thanks. Lance, do you, are you guys the one that are gonna have to write that, or do we get help from um, from these folks over here?
These folks will be helping me, that's correct.
Okay, and
They helped with the, the previous uh OWRD grant. We got a hundred fifty-four thousand. They're very experienced. That's why they're, they're gonna do it.
And does a seventy-five percent cover, like, all the, all the costs in here, or is there just certain Or is there just certain pieces of the costs that that 75% is? Like, is it everything on that page of the, of the, the costs?
Well, I'll let them speak to it, but I know the, this feasibility study that we just did, we came up with a cost, project cost, with the application. They looked at the project cost and they, uh, they agreed to 50% of that. So unless I'm reading that differently, and this grant opportunity is something different, uh, I would imagine it's the total project cost.
Yeah, uh, uh, there's nothing sort of left out of that. Um, it's 75% of that total project cost.
Thank you so much for the clarification.
Yeah, well, one of the things I will say though is that, and, and I've run into this once or twice, uh, not, not recently, but that is that, um, you can rank really highly, and if they, if they don't have enough money to fund your project, they may say, hey, can you, uh, how much of this project can you do without, um, you know, and, and then sort of push you to the next grant cycle for the remainder of it. So, um, you know, they're, they're, they can be pretty creative. And the other thing that they've done too is say, well, we don't have all the money now, but we think we're going to have some more funding later on. Uh, you know, and that's again, if you're sort of right on the cusp of being selected or not. Um, this would be a pretty large ask. So, you know, we would want to rank up, way up near the top. But if you were down to the point where they didn't have the full amount, they might be asking those types of questions. You know, we just don't know.
Uh, let me get a follow-up to that, and this would be for you both, Peter and Walt. Um, the timeline of a project like this, what are we looking at from, they give us the grant, how long is it going to take to design everything? And put it in place, and then go out and do the well? And, and what are we talking about? Timeline?
Do you want me to start, Peter?
Yeah, you start with the well part of it.
We're, we're, we're at the front end. So, so there, there are two parts of the, you know, the work that we're usually involved in. And that, one is the, the permitting piece. And that, and that, uh, you know, uh, that can take, oh, a couple months to put together all the materials, and then about six to eight months for, uh, review and approval. Um, but simultaneously, while you're doing that, you're going through the design process for the well. Uh, you know, we, we generally don't recommend people actually drill a well until you've got at least some kind of affirmation you're going to get your permit. I wouldn't be worried about it in this case, but, you know, it's just being prudent. Um, so between the design and then the drilling of the well, you're looking, and the permitting, you're looking at probably about a year or so. And then, you know, maybe a year and a little bit of change. And then there's the, uh, the piece, you know, that, that, uh, the Keller, the engineering folks would be involved in, which is sort of the wellhead and the wellhouse and so on. And Peter, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, that's, that, uh, big number, I mean, round numbers is about a year-long design process, right? I mean, typical for a project like that. And then, uh, the, the construction, um, uh, you know, that could, depends on the season we're in.
And so it's, it's feasible that we, we could get, go, go through two grant cycles. Correct?
Yeah, yep, yep, absolutely. I mean, if, if they, if they awarded the full amount, then, you know, you wouldn't have to worry about that. But if, but if they didn't, then yeah, you're, you're right, you're absolutely right, Lance.
All right. Let's, I just wanted to make sure of that, right?
Yeah, and then, and then there's a, there's a little bit of a testing, you know, kind of a shakedown testing piece and a couple cycles, and then you're right into operations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One last question for Lance. The water storage tank up on Pine Street. Can you just elaborate for the citizens and tell us what the usage is of that?
It's a 5 million gallon tank. We generally have around four and a half million gallons in it. Um, depending on the time of year, summertime, um, if we had an issue, uh, North San YAM River issue, that would last us about two days, maybe. The other thing we need to consider, uh, in the wintertime, you know, we, we go about a million and a half to 2 million gallons a day. So, you know, you're looking at three, two or three days. When we had the fuel spills in the past, we saw them coming, so we, uh, we really cut back. We filled the, the tank up to 5 million gallons and we really watched it. We got through a third of the week before we had to start buying from Salem. The problem with buying from Salem, though, is that it's not a 12-month purchase time. In the summertime, because of the algae issues, they overchlorinate, um, their water. So it helps kill the algae before it gets to Salem and Turner. But we, it, we couldn't draw it out and use it right now, because it's got too much chlorine. And we couldn't put it in our system in the summertime. So in the summertime, if something happens, we're, we've got 5 million gallons. That's it. Unless we do some more modifications to this Schedule M tank, which that is in my plan to do something, to use that as another, uh, clear well. So we can use Salem water in the, in the summertime. However, again, if there's a fuel spill above Salem, they're not going to be using it as well. They're going to be using their ASRs and, uh, and from their, and their aquifer in Salem. Walt, did you work on that one for Salem? Their ASR?
I, I have not worked directly for Salem, I should say. I've, I've supported, uh, our GSI team that has worked on that project. And they store something like, uh, 500 or 600 million gallons, something along that line.
So they can rely on it.
Yeah, it, yeah, they've got three, three less production wells. And they're, they are in the process of, um, designing an expansion to a 20 million gallon per day system. So I think three or about four or five new wells.
So they, they have opportunities that we don't. If we have a fuel spill, we have 5 million gallons. Depending on the time of year, it could be anywhere from two days to four days. And, uh, then we're bringing truckloads of water in.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make one comment? I, I wanted to thank Keller Associates for the very nice packet that they created that was very informative and for answering the questions. And especially Lance, for the questions that you anticipated that we would want to know the information even if we didn't know what to ask. So thank you very much.
Thank, I, I'd like to say thank you and then recognize GSI as well. They're instrumental, a key part of that group, so.
That's it, guys. Thanks very much for coming today. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right. That's it? All right. Ooh, that's a lot to digest.
Yeah, I realize it was, and I apologize for that, but I thought it was necessary that you guys saw that. I'm sure you're ready to, uh, submit fund to OWRD to get our reimbursement back. We've got 140,000, or I processed it. I think 140,000 of the 154,000.
Lance, can you turn the button on?
In the coming week, I just, uh, submitted the reimbursement request, and they will be processing that shortly.
Are we ready to move on? I think so.
I'm sorry, can you, can you, what was that?
We're ready to move on.
What's that reimbursement for? I didn't hear that part.
Um, the work that Keller and GSI had done, we, we received $154,000 grant from the Oregon Water Resources Department. And so they are reimbursing us. The intersection currently is an all-way stop controlled and operates at an acceptable level of service. However, based on existing vehicular volumes, the intersection meets signal warrants, as prescribed in the MUTCD, the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Additionally, during the public engagement process conducted during our transportation system plan update in 2019, this intersection was noted to need intersection control upgrades to improve traffic flow. The alternatives, uh, were, were a single-lane roundabout, and that was chosen to be a, the preferred alternative to a traffic, four-way traffic stop or alike. Um, during the May 2020, State and Budget Committee approved allocating 325,000 towards the design of the roundabout, 202,000 of which would be paid from our street SDCs. Uh, the remaining 123,000 would come from the Street Enterprise Fund. We put out a contract, uh, an RFP for consultants to do the work. Kilsen Associates, uh, was the low bidder on that. Um, and we have been working with them. Uh, project design considerations, before we even started this project, we started, we sat down, we went through the different considerations we should be looking at and focusing on when we go through this design. Uh, from the very beginning of this project, we knew we had certain things that this project is going to face. Uh, one is the, obviously, the, the citizens preferred a roundabout versus traffic lights. We wanted to get this designed and have it shovel-ready in case state and federal dollars were available to us because of the pandemic. And so we moved forward on that. Um, we knew that the intersection needed to be completed so we could promote our commercial industrial areas for economic growth, um, west of Wilco. We also knew we had high groundwater in that area, and designing any type of stormwater management facility would be trying. So as a design team, we all knew these issues existed, and we did, but we did not understand the extent of these issues until we started the design process, which is pretty much the way design works. You don't know what you don't know until you start learning about it. And we have faced several hurdles along the way, which has pushed the timeline back and increased the potential cost of the design and construction of the project. In February, the Corps of, February, February of 2022, the Corps of Engineers informed this team that they had to be taking jurisdiction of the roadside ditch south of Shaft Road, west of Wilco. The decision has changed the process for designing the stormwater management system, thereby increasing costs. I decided, before we went any farther, I wanted to bring this to the city council's attention so we can discuss it. Um, and we will be going through that tonight. So in an effort to be transparent with the design team, before you tonight, they're going to give you some background and look to the future, what needs to happen to get this project completed, if you so choose to. Tony Roos is with us tonight. Uh, he's with Kilsen Associates. His team of Caleb Cox, I'm not sure he's here, Shannon Williams from Keller Associates. But Tony is here by himself, and so he's going to go through a presentation. I believe I gave you his PowerPoint presentation before the meeting, so you have that. And with that, Tony, it's on you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Happy to be here tonight to give you a little background on what we ran into on the roundabout, or what we circled through on the roundabout as it was. See if I can get this program to work. See, that's probably not sharing the right screen, is it? All right, Lance, we got the right screen now?
We cannot see it, Tony.
Well. There we go. How's that?
That's better.
Perfect. The pedal's going on too. After two years of Zoom meetings, I should have had this one figured out. All right, so as Lance noted, we started the process of a roundabout design based off the TSP. Uh, what you see here is the, the original sketch that was done for the project, uh, when the TSP started. There we go. As we advanced the design, we had a, uh, full survey completed, topographic survey completed, right-of-way survey, figure out where the center line and the right-of-way lines are. And we also had a stormwater analysis done for the corridor. And not knowing that the construction funding could potentially be tied to federal funding, state funding, we went through all of the categorical exclusion items that are required when you do state-funded projects. And that includes a, a hazardous material assessment of the corridor. So we looked all around where we might be widening for underground storage tanks, uh, contaminated soils. And with the gas station right there, you never know that it was used in previous life, but that came up clean. There's nothing contaminated out there that we can find in the reporting. We also did a wetland delineation, and, because that's something that's always required. We, uh, unfortunately, they did flag the wetlands. As Lance noted, the wetland ditch on the south side of Shaft Road, as well as a isolated wetland on the north side of Shaft Road. So when you have a wetland impact, that triggers Army Corps of Engineers Department of State lands. So we have to get a formal delineation, and then if you're filling that wetland, it requires you to get clearance for biologicals wells, for fish. And by the Corps saying they're taking jurisdiction of the wetland ditch on the south side of Shaft Road, needs to coordinate with National Marine Fisheries. And they've said there's a potential for fish to be traveling from San YAM up the Salem ditch and into the wetland ditch. Uh, Lance tells me there is no fishermen that use that ditch, so I don't know if I believe it, but it could potentially be there. So, wetland permitting has been triggered. And in addition to the fish passage requirements and making sure there's no fish there when we construct, it also triggers an incredibly three-times larger stormwater treatment system. So we have to treat and hold back, detain more stormwater than you would under a city of state and code. So it creates a much larger footprint for stormwater detention and, and water quality treatment. So as the project's gone on, we've also looked at the explosive prices that have been going on the last couple of years, uh, since 2018. And these are the big five. Uh, dirt work, you know, the trucking cost, just to move material around, has gone astronomical, and with the rising cost of fuel right now, it's probably going to go higher. But we're seeing a 70% increase on earthwork. Aggregate rock price has gone up 70% from 2018. Asphalt, I just got a bid on a project down in southeast Oregon for over $200 a ton per asphalt. And it's $75 a ton in 2018. Curbs have gone up $57, 83%. Sidewalk's gone up 66%. And it's gotten to the point where ODOT's internal, uh, project controls and estimating units have put out a decree to all of the engineers and their own staff that says, predict prices to go higher. There, this is going to stick around for a little while. So the ramifications of these cost increases, uh, the TSP when the roundabout was chosen was in the ballpark of $2.3 million. We looked at options for Signal or the roundabout. Both are right in the $5 million range in today's dollars. Uh, that can be attributed to about a million four in stormwater increases because of that additional detention and treatment. And about 1.6 is due to the inflation of the, of the construction material. Um, with the design, with the concurrence, Army Corps took over six months to concur with the wetland delineation that was done. And so we kind of put the project on a little hold while that was happening. And once they concurred with it, we've got to go back and revise some of our drawings and our, our concept work. So there's about a $45,000 increase in rate, in the, in the design fee to cover that Army Corps issue. The benefit, if the project moves forward and we build the roundabout, or Signal, the property of the southwest corner would become more shovel-ready because the project would fill that ditch. Now that it's been concurred with by the Army Corps, it's on their radar. So, and, go ahead.
Let me speak to that real quick. What he's talking about is the commercial slash industrial land south of Shaft Road, west of Wilco. That's all our industrial base. If anybody was to come in there and develop, they would have to go through the same processes we're going through. Which, as far as, in my mind, being a consultant for 20-some years, I don't know a developer in the world that would come in and spend that kind of money to put a business there. I just, you need to be aware of that. They're just going to look and find another piece of ground where they can build their business. They're not going to put that kind of money into a roundabout and then build a stormwater system, um, that meets, uh, meets the criteria that we're having. And they're going to have to, because the Corps of Engineers And they're going to have to because the Corps of Engineers took jurisdiction of that drainage ditch on the south side of Shaft Road. And with that, I'll go back to you, Tony. I just wanted to be clear with that.
You said it much more eloquently than I could. So we're here tonight to give you an update of where we are, rejected construction costs. The next steps should the roundabout move forward is a truck rodeo. So we'd go out and find a big piece of parking lot, open land, set up the, set the roundabout up with traffic cones and invite the freight industry to bring us their biggest, largest truckloads that they would, they would haul through the roundabout and let them test it on a closed circuit course. That may affect the design. We've run our models to, and we're, we're very confident that the layout that we have will work for those trucks. But nothing beats their ability to drive through it, to set their minds at ease. So then we go into final design. The project goes on hold, at least then the developers will have the ultimate lining grade to be able to build their private improvements too. And then we would identify, look for funding sources and apply for grants to construct the roundabout or the intersection improvements. And that's my presentation. If you have questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I just like clarification, please, on the ramifications on developability of industrial land. When you're talking about that southwest corner, will be more shovel ready for development if the city's intersection project fills the wetland ditch. Do you mean that literally fill it? Or are you covering the cost of the Corps doing their due diligence?
If I understood your, your question, whoever develops that, whether we, whether we choose, if we just choose tonight and say, we're not going forward with the roundabout, we're not going to put a signal in there, okay? If anybody wants to develop, develop that piece on the southwest corner, they're going to have to do frontage improvements, which means they're filling that ditch, which means they're going to be building stormwater infrastructure because the Corps is going to require it. And so they won't be able to develop unless they spend their own dollars to do that.
I understand that. I guess my question was if the Corps recognizes that as a wetlands, they're going to allow that to physically be altered?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have to do some mediation, probably buy some wetland bank from the wetland bank in Salem. It's done all the time, but yeah, we'd have to do some mediation or we go up to, you know, there's other different ways of doing it. I've gone along like creeks, creek beds like Mill Creek and enhance that area in my development world. They allow that type of thing because there's wetlands up there and you enhance the wetlands, the existing wetlands. So we'd work with the Division of State Lands and the Corps of Engineers to come up with a plan. But worst case scenario, if we don't want to do any of that mitigation, we just buy into a wetland bank. I don't, what was the cost? What's the recent price? Last time I did it was like 50,000 an acre for wetland.
I've seen upwards of 75, 75,000 an acre.
So you're basically cutting a check to the wetland bank for whatever you need and it just goes away magically.
So it's like an exchange essentially.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? Thank you. Lance, regarding the funding piece of this, did city staff, can you remind me? Because I know we've talked about it, but it's been a while. Can you remind me if this was one of the projects that city staff was hoping to use some federal funds for? And if so, how much are we looking at that we would have to cover as the city versus what we could use with federal funds?
When we move forward with this project, and I'll speak to that, we move forward with this project basically right when the pandemic started. And we all sat down and we thought that if this pandemic is anything like the 2008 crisis, the federal government is going to be putting dollars out to get for shovel ready projects, to get people working again. And so we anticipated that. And so we came to the city council, the city council said, yeah, that's probably a good idea. Let's do that. Let's at least get it designed. So if the federal government does start passing money out or giving money to cities and counties to build road projects, we have our shovel ready plans. And that was the intent all along is that. Had we had any kind of determination where we're going to get that money in a specific grant? No, we didn't. We just speculated that there would be money available in the future once we had this project designed and we could apply for it. And we'd be sitting better than most because we have shovel ready plans. And that's what we, that was the target all along. Unfortunately, when we started designing this, things started going haywire because of that ditch on Shaft Road. You know, and I, I was amazed, I, you could ask Tony here, I went round and round with them saying, there's no way. That's fish bearing, it's a drainage ditch for heaven's sake. It, it was a, you know, a month and a half of me fighting, racking my head against the wall with the Corps of Engineers, the Division of State Lands, Marion County. I got Marion County to write letters for me saying, look, we've been maintaining that for 50 years and there hasn't been one fish in there. It's a drainage ditch, but the Corps of Engineers took jurisdiction. There's nothing we can do about that.
Right. I remember how it was for Detroit, working with the Corps of Engineers. So fun times, but thank you for your work with them regardless. Follow up question is, I'm just trying to understand the funding that with like ARPA funds, I believe that we had done things with the sand filter beds. But was there an infrastructure package as well that came to us or no, that never happened?
No, I don't believe, I don't recall, Alyssa, you may recall, but I don't recall the roundabout ever playing a part in that because we were so, we were so far back from them as far as getting it designed. I don't think we allocated any of the money from ARPA, any of the ARPA funds to help build that or design that. Doesn't mean we can't change our mind, but I don't think ARPA funds are for street projects.
Right. I thought there was an infrastructure project that came through later or something.
Yeah, and, and we still are waiting to hear more on that. They've, they've announced some grant programs at the federal level, which I'm sure that they could look into for this, but nothing has trickled down yet to dispersments.
And so we're just not to that phase yet of looking at like the funding piece.
We're not to that phase, but one of the fortunate things we have going for us is my, my friend here, Tony, until recently was the president of the Ameri, of Oregon's, Oregon's Public Works Association. He's, he goes to federal meetings all the time. Maybe you can share some, some information with us, Tony, that I'm not aware of regarding federal grants or dollars that we could be looking at.
Nothing specific, as you know, that's been announced for this. They are in the process of rolling out the grant funding programs through the IIHAA, the most recent infrastructure bill that was just passed back in November. So they're slowly rolling out the, the grant programs that will fund projects like this.
But nothing yet.
Nothing yet, no. We're watching very closely.
That's what we know about the, the funding right now. So I thought it was important to bring that before the council this evening, so the council's aware of where we're at. I think this is one of those, those projects we probably want to sit down and talk about after you guys have digested this, this presentation. We sit down and decide whether we want to go forward or not. I thought it was important that we brought it before you because it's also important to realize that if we want to get any kind of economic development going in our industrial area, someone's going to have to address this issue. It's unfortunate that the city of Staton, the west side of town specifically, the industrial area specifically has high groundwater. Whoever developed out there is going to have to deal with groundwater and that may drive them away as well. This happens to be at the, at the north end of that property. So there's a lot of issues out there and it's up for the city to decide whether or not they want to play an active role in fixing it out there and getting our land so it can be developed and maybe infuse some tax dollars into our city. But this is the first step and so we have some tough decisions to make. And it's probably not for tonight, but you guys should be aware of where we're at. I, I put Tony's team on hold until we determine where we want to go.
Mr. Mayor, I have one short follow up question. So we don't have like a certain deadline that we would have to move forward on this if like that would make us miss out on a funding opportunity that was major or anything like that?
Well, I think, no, I mean, I don't know of one. I think you just heard Tony say he doesn't know them, they're coming. But I, I think you probably want to make a decision one way or the other.
Right.
Not real soon. They, I mean, these, these folks are consultants, they're going to be moving on to to other projects.
Right.
It's not going to be like, hey, Tony, stop what you're doing, come work for the city of Staton now. It's, you know, we, we need to, we need to be diligent about our decision making, that's it.
My, my only reason I ask that is because of the IIHAA funding. And I know the federal government isn't always fast at that kind of stuff. And so is there some like leniency in, in kind of waiting to see what that looks like? And if it looks fruitful for us, because this is a huge increase in the cost, so.
Yeah, I think what I would, we can talk about in the near future, hopefully, is whether or not you want to go forward with the design. The design and the construction are two different things. The design isn't going to cost us that much more, 45,000 at most. All right, we've already got money allocated toward it. Do we want to have shovel ready plans? That's really the question. And if we do with the roundabout, we've got to make that decision. And I would suggest we make it, you know, fairly soon, again, because consultants move on. They're all in to make money as well. The construction component is different though. That's where, you know, it went from 2.6 billion to 5.2 or something like that. It almost doubled in cost, so that's something to think about as well.
Thank you for making that clear that it's really the design and that 45,000 is, is the increase. And so is that something that we can get on the agenda for like the next meeting or so? Is there room for it so we can at least move forward on the design if that's what the council wants to do?
I'm not even sure we need to go there. I mean, I think I can bring a staff report together. I don't, it's just a matter of Lance, go keep going forward. But I wanted to bring the, the information to you. I didn't want to say, all right, we're just going to go spend $45,000 more without you knowing where we're at. I think that's important. We, you know, that's what we've been after for the last seven years is to, to let people know where we're at and not hide anything from them. So that's why I'm here tonight. I didn't want to hide anything from you guys. So I just need it from the council to go forward and we can go forward and continue the design process. But I think we should probably at least wait until the next meeting. And I'll bring something forward and you guys can digest the information that we shared with you tonight and we can, we can talk about it then.
And that would include like, like a input from Susanna with the funding piece of it?
The funding piece is coming straight out of street funds. I'm letting you know right now.
Okay. Is there something that we can do tonight as a council then to, if, if the council agreed to move that forward then? Just consensus or what, what works here?
I'll leave that to you folks.
Alyssa?
It's not an action item, but if there's consensus of the council, then yes.
I'm fine with it moving forward personally, so.
Lance, I keep hearing that, you know, we could move on this, but it, it keeps sounding like, like you're considered opinionist to, is to wait for a while.
No, you're not reading me correctly. My, I just want to have everything out there so you guys are aware of it. That's my concern. The costs have gone up double, all right? I don't want to design something and then put it out to bid and then it comes back twice as much as what we had counted on two years ago. And you're looking at me going Lance, you know, what happened here? You need to be aware of what the increased cost is. You also need to be aware of, we're, we're not in the business, but we do want to want to develop our industrial base. That's not going to happen in that area without help from somebody, either the city, county, state. You know, we need to address that issue. If we do not develop the roundabout and fix that stormwater situation out there along the ditch, that means the developer is going to have to come in and do that. Developers don't like to pull money out of the pocket to fix someone else's problem and that's really a city problem. And so if you ever want to look at maybe developing that industrial area, you may want to talk about partnering and getting it done. So my thing is, is if, if you're comfortable with getting shovel plate ready plans together, let's go forward.
Lance, isn't there another player in this that hasn't been mentioned tonight?
I haven't mentioned anybody other than the city and because it's.
The state, the county, the feds. There's another local player here.
The county's been involved with the design, they're part of the design team. We haven't had any commitments for dollars. We haven't really brought it up. I know the city is bearing the burden for the design costs. But again, we're not to the point of constructing, so I don't know, things may change. You know, once we have the design done and we sit down and try to put a package together, perhaps we get some outside agencies and, and people to step forward. But right now we're talking about the design and it's, the city's bearing the burden for that.
There's, at this point then, there's no other negotiation with any other entity?
Not for the design, no.
Okay. All right, that's good. What do you folks want to do?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Lance, you caught my attention on two things you said and one of them I don't disagree with. And that's the access to that industrial area shouldn't be the brunt of the developer. The other thing you said is that there's a water table issue there. And I think you said if. That makes me a little apprehensive to put all this money into the design phase if there's no guarantee that what we do there is going to let the area be developed without additional investment from the potential future landowners.
Let me clear that up or try to. If we were to go forward and build the round, design the roundabout, build it, we'll be repairing, we'll be fixing the area in front of the property to the northeast, the corner of Wilco and Shaft. We'll be fixing that. But all the onsite storm drainers for their site, that'll be on a developer. So I guess the way I look at it is at some point in time, that's a separate issue that we're going to have to discuss as well. I think there are ways of taking care of that as well. We haven't talked about them yet as a council. But that is another area that we need to talk about if we want to develop that area. Is we, we did spend $15,000 or the county gave us a grant here a few years ago to put pseometers in the ground to determine where our groundwater is out on that industrial area. So we know where the groundwater is and we know we could probably design something, but it's going to take some dollars and it's going to take some ingenuity and it's going to take just some discussions to figure out how we want to do it. I have some ideas, but they're not free, you know, you're going to have to buy land. But as far as going back to the design of this, it, whoever develops that north piece, they're going to have to do frontage improvements. And when they do frontage improvements, they're going to have to fill that ditch. And so they're going to be in the same position as we are. So the question is, do we want to go do it? And so this person can focus their dollars on perhaps storm drainage issues? Or do we want to let it go and people look at it and they, just so that's just too much for us to bear? That's too much for us to swallow? We'll go, we'll go somewhere else and find some land that we don't have to put so much money in.
Did, did you mean the southwest piece or?
I was looking at, yeah, south.
Okay, perfect.
Across from McDonald's there, yeah.
Got it. Okay. I did have a question on the storm water retention, detention? What is it? I'm using the wrong terms.
Well, in this case. Well, in this case, it will be detention, but you know, yeah.
Okay. So, all right, the, the storm water facility or stuff that you're doing, I don't know how to speak about it correctly, but I'm glad that you do. So is there a way, and I don't understand the work that you do well because, right, I mean, it's very obvious why. But is there a way to build this stormwater detention or retention facility to pull a little bit more water that would take away some of the burden from anyone that did develop or is that not possible?
No, we, you can do that and, you know, I've done it, we've done it, I've done it in my past, so you can design for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that would make a developer want to come in more, correct?
The big thing is you need the area to do it, the footprint to build something. And right now, all we have is an 80-foot right-of-way that we can build a, a road and stormwater facilities in. Doesn't give us much.
So it may have to be like a private-public partnership with whoever wanted to.
We may have to go purchase some ground to build something and therein lies the key to if we do that, then maybe we buy more land so we can serve that industrial area and we do it all in one shot so someone can come in and develop that industrial area and then we charge them. I mean, these are, these are issues we can talk about at some point in time.
Cool.
But yeah, those are, those are ways to go about doing that. But tonight, it's just about where we're at with the design, what kind of roadblocks we've hit and whether or not we want to move forward with the design to get that done for an additional $45,000. But you also know that if we do that, the additional cost for constructing that roundabout has doubled since when we started this project. And so that's something to think about as well.
Mr. Mayor? I just wanted to say a couple of comments on it. So I'm glad that Counselor Quigley brought up the concern that he had there. I think that for me, it's important to go through with the design piece at least, even with the, you know, the potential increases, only because we've already come this far and we won't have the opportunity even for possible federal grant funding if we just call it quits right now. If it's shovel-ready, we have opportunities for, you know, our state legislature to possibly put something into a bill for us with, you know, working with our, you know, state senators, state representatives and then also the federal piece. And then, you know, we do have, we do have a pretty good relationship, it seems like, with the county commissioners. So I think there's a lot of potential for, you know, conversations to get, you know, the funding. But if we don't do the design, we don't get any of that. And so $45,000 extra to me doesn't, doesn't seem like that much of a cost when you're talking about how much we've already spent on this design piece. Those are just my thoughts.
Thank you. Lance, does the community know how much we spent on this whole project?
No, we're, we're at 30% plans.
So what, 100,000?
I, I don't really recall off the top of my head. I should have looked before I came, but I did not.
It's almost a fish or cut bait.
Well, it is regardless of how much we spent. It's fish or cut bait, you know, it's, it's not my money.
Mr. Mayor?
If it was me, I would recommend we move forward. But it's not my money.
Counselor Ort, please?
I'm not a voted, I'm not voted in, so.
Okay.
Lance, I know that you, you touched on this, but is there any, any recourse or any, any way we can contest the, I know you said you've talked to people, but is there, there's no other avenue that we can contest the Corps of Engineers? Like no one above them that we can go to?
Tony?
It just seems kind of ridiculous what you're saying that they're, what they're calling that and it's not.
Well, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Counselor. Tony, it's been my past that you can, it's been my experience, you can appeal those, but the success rate of appealing the Corps of Engineers, which is a federal jurisdiction that's not very good, but I believe there is an appeal period. Is that correct, sir?
There is, there's an alternative approach we could have taken as well to go through a full biological assessment, but when you go through the biological assessment, 99% of the time, you end up getting conditioned with the same treatment requirements as you would had you just gone through their programmatic approach.
Okay. Thank you. And then I just want to say that I'm, I'm the same mind of Counselor Hook that I feel like we should move forward with the design phase and like we've said before, having a shovel-ready project is essential if we want to get anywhere with it. So I'm, I'd like to move forward with it as well.
That's it. We can go to a vote on this, not tonight. I know the shaking head thing, yeah.
It can be, if there's a consensus of the council, it, it will be okay. If there's any apprehension, I would suggest that we come back at the next meeting and do a formal vote.
Well, let's take an informal poll, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I don't have any apprehension. I'd just like to see full council have an opportunity to speak on this, but I'm in agreement. I think we should continue with the design phase, another $45,000 is doable. From a long-term perspective, it's the, the costs are going to keep increasing, so.
Don't we see that? Counselor?
I'm, I think that we should move forward with the design plans. Thank you.
Counselor Ort? She already said, she said, she's okay.
Yeah, I'm good with moving forward, excuse me.
Okay, so.
Well, I want to apologize for bringing you guys some great news, but I think we will move forward on that and I will do what I can to keep the costs down on the design as well. Again, I apologize for all the bad, bad news this evening.
Thank you, Lance, appreciate it. Okay, what else have we got? Communications from city staff.
I just wanted to remind the council that next Monday, we have at 6:00 PM here at the Community Center, we've got a budget committee meeting to review some budget revisions with Susanna. That, that is it from us.
Thank you. I've got one thing and that's, I don't know what we can do other than Kelly's family that we regret his passing, but former mayor Wayne Lerman passed away this week and he did a lot of things like this. His name's on the plaque out there. One of the first things I did after he left office was dedicate this, but his name is on the plaque, so he gets their credit. Good man and now gone. That's all I've got. What do you folks got tonight? Anything else tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just really wanted to thank city staff for their hard work and especially Lance. I am very grateful for the way that these presentations went and I feel extremely well-informed on, you know, even though it was a quote, "bad news," as you said, I appreciate that you took the extra time to bring forward the $45,000 and be really transparent because I think that that is what builds trust in the community and it also lets our business, our business partner, our potential business, business owners or developers to know that we are trying. Because I, I know that that has not always been said, that that's what the city does, even though I think it's very clear that, that we really are trying to bring more, more businesses in and get more developments. So thank you very much for all of you guys' hard work.
Mr. Mayor? I'd just like to recognize the Okbajarian on their upcoming milestone, whoever that may be.
Yes, happy birthday to whoever that person is that's turning 80.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
This, I'm sorry, my computer died. Are we still in communications from council?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted a clarification on, at the beginning of the meeting, you took the agenda item off the meeting and that was something that the council specifically voted on last meeting. And so I just wanted to get some clarification on how that works and what the protocol is for, for that process.
Well, I certainly respect your, your voice on it, but what seemed like the last meeting, the, the passionate people for this aren't here tonight. I'd like to have, get their take on it. That's all that is now.
I, I appreciate that. Your comments before you took it off the, before you took it off the agenda didn't quite align with that, but I appreciate that answer and I look forward to talking about it at the next meeting.
That's fine, that's, and that's all it was about. I just wanted those, those two members to be able to have a say. They weren't even here on, couldn't be here on Zoom even, so they didn't, didn't get a chance, okay?
Okay, fair enough.
All right, thank you. Anything else, anyone tonight? Are we done then? Let's go home. Thank you, folks. Meeting's adjourned.
Good night, everybody.